Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and if everyone could please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Stone Cypher?
Lord, we thank you for bringing us together today. We thank you so much for these students that you have entrusted to all of us here. We pray for their support, for their strength through this semester. We pray that you would be their vision, their wisdom. We just ask that you would put your comforting arms over everyone associated with this college. Thank you for the time and dedication that our faculty and administrators put into their very important roles. Thank you for what this school means to our community. And we just ask that you would give us here, Lord, this board today, wisdom to do as you would do, wisdom to help the college move forward and be successful for many years to come. It's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America. Consider Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, Dr. Williams sends her regards to the extent that she felt able to. She was diagnosed last night with the flu, so I respectfully asked her not to be here today. So bear with, Jackie is filling in in her capable shoes and bear with us as we move forward because Dr. Williams certainly is all of our leaders, not just the team's leaders. So we appreciate your patience if we need it this morning. So thank you. So the first is, I know I will need patience as we present these retirement resolutions. So thank you. Mrs. Janita Ghazali. Oh, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Did I say your name correctly, Janita?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas, Mrs. Janita Ghazali began her career as a senior accounting technician at the Allstate Center on January 8th, 1996. And whereas, Mrs. Ghazali became the administrative services specialist for the Administrative Information Systems Department four years later, where she has served until her retirement. And whereas, Mrs. Ghazali is an accomplished woman who speaks three languages and has a Master of International Law degree from Paragayan?
Parahyaman.
Say that again.
Parahyaman.
Par-.
Para.
See, she speaks three languages, not me. Catholic university in Bangdun Jawa, Indonesia.
Indala, Indonesia.
Has always been highly regarded and respected by her colleagues. And whereas, Mrs. Ghazali, a kind woman with a generous spirit, has throughout her career at St. Petersburg College provided valuable assistance and support to those she served and championed the mission and goals of the college to those in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Mrs. Janita Ghazali and extend to her our best wishes and for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 18th day of February 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Coming to working for the college because before that, when we immigrate from Indonesia 40 years ago, I, my husband is entrepreneur, so I work for him. So when the college have an opening, I try to kind of apply and get accepted. At the college here, I really learn teamwork and understanding what that means of working together for the college and for the students. Is I make good friends and also there's a lot of friends that's supporting me in here. And I really appreciate because I really grow within this 24 years, having a voice for myself because I came from Indonesia where women is just a shadow of the men. And here I learn I have, it's me. I'm standing up for myself and appreciate all the help that I can grow and be myself and a voice. Thank you so much.
(Applause). Thank you.
You so much. Congratulations.
(Applause).
We have another retirement resolution. Mrs. Janice Maskel.
Whereas, Mrs. Janice Maskel came to St. Petersburg College in 1993 and served with excellence as administrative secretary, staff assistant, and executive staff assistant in the college's facilities department for more than 12 years. And Mrs. Maskel was an integral member of the facilities team assisting with report preparation, construction plan reviews, construction project administration, and delivering top-notch assistance to the head of the facilities department. And whereas, Mrs. Maskel transferred to the college's institutional advancement marketing department as executive staff assistant and administrative services specialist in 2005. A talented writer and copy editor, she was an essential part of the production team that produced dozens of printed materials each academic term. She was the liaison between the composing room and the college's print shop and always made sure customers were treated with the utmost courtesy and respect. And whereas, the general council's office welcomed Mrs. Maskel to its legal team in 2015, where she has served with distinction as senior administrative services specialist for five years, working diligently to increase department efficiencies and serve her colleagues and the college's constituents with professionalism and integrity. Whether responding to subpoenas, managing records, supporting colleagues, or fielding calls, Mrs. Maskel has performed her duties with intentionality and in true commitment to excellence. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding college contributions to the college by Mrs. Janice Maskel and extend to her our best wishes for an enjoyment throughout the years ahead.
(Applause).
Wow. Well, as you can see, from day one, I was moving up in the college, three, four departments. I was heading for the president's office, but time ran out. Anyway, it's been a wonderful ride, 26 years, and I look forward to every day coming to work. And there are not many people who can say that. So I really enjoyed my time here, all that I've learned, especially the people I've met. I came over from the 66th Street office, and I think one of the reasons I'm kind of glad in retiring, I don't see many people left from there. So we talk about our peeps are all gone, but even the new faces, it's been great to meet them, whether talking on the phone, many, that way they're on the phone, and all the help that I've been given. And like I said, it's bittersweet, but I'm looking forward to the future. My husband and my son are here to make sure that I am leaving. Love and appreciate them very much too. So thanks again for 26 wonderful years and the wonderful ride it has been. Thank you.
(Applause).
It's always a wonderful way to start our meetings, I think, with a celebration of our team. So moving on to our SPC spotlights, and I'll invite Jesse Turtle to come forward and introduce our...
Good morning, Chair Cole, trustees.
Morning.
Mrs. Grid. Happy to stand before you to introduce two wonderful institutions that support St. Petersburg College. The Barrett Family Foundation was not able to join us today, but they recently made a $50,000 gift to support veterans here at St. Petersburg College. They have been friends of Dr. Williams and the college for many, many years. They have readjusted their foundation mission and thought of us first, and so it's a wonderful gift. When they are available, I will bring them back so we can acknowledge their gift, and it will be a longstanding support that we were able to get from the Barrett Foundation. So wanted to acknowledge them. Second, we have the Patrick Brett Family Foundation is here. They have recently made a $100,000 gift to bolster their already very supportive scholarship. And we have two representatives from the Patrick Brett Foundation to talk about what they do.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Jesse. My name is Megan Roach, and I am the 2020 president of the Patrick Brett Foundation. I am here with Terry Brett, who is the brains and heart behind the foundation. The vision of the Patrick Brett Foundation is to provide opportunities for second chances and fresh starts through scholarships. So we've been able to fulfill that vision through our four-year history, through the seamless partnership with St. Petersburg College that we are so grateful for. Last year, as Jesse mentioned, we started an endowment fund because we were committed to ensuring that the Patrick Brett Foundation had a sustainable and lasting impact and was able to provide scholarships, fresh start scholarships for students at St. Petersburg College for years to come. This year, with our second contribution of $100,000, we renew that commitment to the students of St. Petersburg College and funding fresh start scholarships. So as we enter our fifth year, kicking it off with our biggest gift yet, we are excited for what the future holds, for the lives that we can affect, and the people that can be inspired through our sharing of Patrick's enduring spirit.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you for the time today to speak to all of you. I am very grateful for Megan and her leadership. One of the things that my wife, Kim, and I did when we had the dream of creating this foundation was to let the peers and colleagues and friends of Patrick run this organization. We basically put the framework together and we recruited about 30 or 40 young professionals like Megan. She's a lawyer in St. Petersburg, and asked them to define the mission and the vision and the values of the organization and to carry it forward. So I am so thankful to her and her team, who have done such a wonderful job. And just to brag just a second or two, in the four years, we have been able to give about 250,000-plus to St. Pete College and to the foundation, who has just been a wonderful partner. And the last thing I want to say is Jesse and his team, Katie and Teresa and all of them, I know I'm going to leave some names out, they have been absolutely wonderful. I know when I was sitting at that table years ago as a trustee, I would hear great things about the foundation and what they were doing, and I knew it was true, but now I get to witness it and be a part of it. They are wonderful. They are an unbelievable team of dedicated professionals. So make sure to let Dr. Williams know that I said that, please. All right? So thank you very, very much. Thank you.
We're going to have trustees. I'll take a picture. Mr. Brett?
I guess I need to stand in the back.
In the middle.
I'll stand in the way. Stand behind you. Yeah, you need to go up front.
I'll go see you. I'll go be the short people.
Take me three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jesse, for having Mr. Brett here and Megan and recognizing the Barrett Family Foundation and for all of your hard work in the short time it seems that you've been here. So it's really wonderful. And moving on to comments, I first wanted to say thank you to Mr. Gibbons and Trustee Kidwell and I. Last week, we're in Washington DC for two days, visiting with, excuse me, Jackie and Erid and Dr. Williams, and we're able to see all four of our delegates, which is really a special treat to see both Senator Scott and Rubio, as well as Congressman Bill Rakas and Chris. And I appreciate the level of preparedness that the staff had for us and the communication with those offices beforehand. It was extremely important for us to have that FaceTime and to remind them. And I think one of the great reminders that Senator Rubio said was, there's a lot of money available in DC, and his job is to be sure Florida, somebody in Florida is receiving it. And so, working hard and grant's office, Katie Schultz, thank you so much. We had just submitted a grant to Department of Education, and so it was apropos that we were able to speak to the delegates about that and receive their support. So we appreciate the time that we spent there. Trustee Kidwell, we'll look in this direction first.
It was an education by fire for me, my first trip to DC, and we were very well represented. And Dr. Williams is universally respected up there, and I just kind of sat and listened and took it all in and looked forward to future trips. But it was, I was very proud to represent the college there, and we had some fun too. So it was, you know, it was, it was a good time to be there and travel and see everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any? Trustee Brett? Sorry I couldn't be there. We missed you. Trustee Stone Cypher?
Sure. I was also sorry I wasn't in DC. I did have a chance to go to Tallahassee last month, and I just want to remind everyone of the hard work this time of year that President Williams is putting in, along with Erid, of course, and Dr. Williams' staff and everyone else, who is putting the information together and making sure that we are at the forefront of every conversation that happens in Tallahassee during session, and make sure that we have the information that we need for whatever questions may come up during this time. And it's not a surprise Dr. Williams has the flu because she's been running pretty hard. But it's always nice to be up there. We consistently have good conversations. We hope that we are really positioning ourselves for the next few years to have some great years in Tallahassee, and I think we're getting there. So thank you, Chair Cole, for your support and your help through that process as well. There's a lot of moving pieces. On a lighter note, I again got to enjoy the Titan Trot 5K that the FGO so wonderfully coordinates and puts on to the benefit of scholarships for our students here at St. Pete College. We had a great showing this year, even with, for us Floridians, cold, cold, cold weather. I mean, it had to be 49 or 50 degrees at the start of that race, but it was a great event, and thank you all for inviting me. I had a great time. And I think Professor Moriarty, if you're out there, he gave me a run for my money this year, so I've got to step it up, step it up next year. And then, Trustee Kidwell and I also got to attend a women's basketball game along with the men's basketball game that immediately followed. I encourage all of you out there, as I know you already do, to support our SPC athletics. Our coaches and our students are doing a great job, and unfortunately, we didn't come away with a W that night, but we'll be back for more cheering the team on throughout the season and the start of the baseball season, too.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Grid?
Thank you. Yes, so I'm excited to be here to share the personal notes of thanks and congratulations from Dr. Williams on her behalf. And so I wanted to start with the several thank yous to our board members. First, those who took the time to join us in Washington DC, specifically Trustee Gibbons for arranging a personal meeting with Senator Marco Rubio. That is a difficult task, and we came through, and he came through on that. As well as Trustee Stone Cypher for arranging the meeting with Senator Scott. That's also very difficult. I don't think we've ever had an opportunity, at least in my experience, with the visit to DC, that we've had our senators personally meet with us. We typically meet with staff, so that was a very big deal. Erid did a great job in organizing the meetings throughout the trip, and they were very impactful, as you stated. So she was very pleased with that. She'd also like to thank Trustee Gibbons for his generous donation to student success at SPC. She says it says a lot about our trustees that, who invest in their personal resources towards a cause that they believe in. And our trustees significantly support the college, so she thanks you. And then also, Trustee Stone Cypher for sponsoring the Titan Trot Faculty Scholarship fundraiser, and also for your participation. At that event, I think we raised over $5,000. I know the money's still coming in for that, so if you haven't made a donation, please do so. We can share the link for that. And that goes to the FGO Finish Line Scholarship. We had over, I think we had 177 runners, Rachel? Okay, is that a record?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, that's fantastic. And I think the organizers, the group that we, the independent party that puts that on set, it was one of the best events that they've had in showings for our college. So congratulations to all of the organizers. I heard it was a very seamless, fun event, even though it was freezing. And then she would like to share some of the items to brag about since our last board meeting. Last week, our nursing program underwent their eight-year accreditation site visit, and we're happy to report that the reviewers recommended that our Associate in Science Nursing Accreditation be approved for the next eight years. Congratulations. Congratulations to Dr. Lewis and her team for this wonderful accomplishment. Last week, Dr. Williams, we had a busy last week. No wonder, she's sick. Last week, Dr. John Duff and Mr. Joe Hall, who's the founder and CEO of Triorb Solutions, he was actually a brother-to-brother student and a faculty member. Together, they were instrumental in developing alongside several other team members from CCIT and other businesses in developing our cybersecurity four-year degree. And so the three of them went up to Tallahassee to defend the four-year degree, and that was also approved last week. And so wonderful, we will have our first bachelor's program in 10 years.
10 years, our first new program.
So that's wonderful, wonderful news. She wanted to thank the CCIT team, Dewan Fox, Sabrina Crawford, Dr. Duff, and Joe Hall, and anyone else we might be missing for your wonderful contribution to making that happen. Congratulations. The National Council on Teacher Quality rated SPC's elementary education program for our ESOL reading endorsement with a grade of A. This is, this is a group, nonpartisan, non-for-profit, privately funded research and policy organization that designated that grade. So that's a wonderful, independent review of our College of Education K-6 teacher program. So that's a significant nod to Dr. Hartman and her team for that recognition. So congratulations. And then lastly, the City of St. Petersburg awarded SPC with about $330,000 to continue our pitch grant. I think we've, this is maybe our third award that we've received for this, and that grant provides educational and entrepreneurial training opportunities for African-American male students, or youth, getting, trying to get into the college by providing them some workforce training, as well as tuition assistance and mentoring along the way. So that's been a very successful collaboration with the city, with the Urban League, with a number of nonprofit organizations to make that happen, and that certainly will supplement our African-American male initiative going forward. So congratulations to the grants team and the team that puts that program on, Dr. Connor, Misty Kemp, and all of those, all of those individuals for your hard work in making that happen. So that is the president's report, and thank you for the few moments to share all those wonderful things.
Thank you. It is wonderful. So I don't have any blue cards for public comment, but were there any, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our business at hand, which is the first thing is the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting.
Move to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I should have asked for comments, I'm sorry. And then monthly reports. Ms. Gardner?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Cole, trustees. I don't, do not have a report this month.
Thank you. And FGO report, Dr. Bridges? Or Dr. Briggs, sorry. Scared some people out there.
Good morning, Madam Chair, trustees, and Mrs. Grid.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to give you an update on FGO. To be respectful of your time, I'm going to keep this brief. The executive team and senators represent approximately 340 full-time faculty. This slide shows the leadership for FGO for this current academic year. FGO is embedded in all levels of the college. The executive team, consisting of myself and the five campus chairs, meets monthly with Dr. Williams. As you can see, FGO participates in a number of committees and councils representing the concerns of the faculty. In addition, FGO participated in the planning and execution of the aforementioned 2020 Titan Trot 5K run on February 8th. 177 runners and/or walkers participated, raising more than $5,000 for SPC scholarships. Special shout-outs to Dr. Williams, who was a gold-level sponsor, and to Trustee Stone Cypher for his important donation to the event.
It wasn't cash.
And it was important. This slide lists our goals for the current academic year. I will go to the... I will go down the list for you. First, we are now in the process of getting the updated Constitution ready for presentation to you. Once the document is approved by Dr. Williams, we will bring it forward to the board. Once the Constitution is approved by the board, we will work on an updated version of the faculty handbook. A subcommittee from Senate will craft the framework for the handbook, and we will go from there. I anticipate collaboration from other areas of the college. FGO executive team has discussed the issue of pay raises at each of our monthly meetings, and we will continue to do so. We’ve discussed class sizes with the Dean’s Council, and we will also continue to do so. The Academic Integrity Council has been up and running for approximately one year. We now look for administrative support for our efforts. And finally, the Senate met with Dean’s Council in December, and we plan to continue meeting with them twice yearly. At the Welcome Back Titans event this past August, we started a college-wide conversation about choosing courage over comfort here at SPC. This, I believe, is how we can move into the future, making bold and positive choices. At the December meeting with FGO Senate and Dean’s Council, we focused our conversations on solutions, rather than simply pointing out what wasn’t working. Again, I believe this approach will strengthen us as a college and should guide our path going forward. I’d like to say I’m humbled and honored to both represent faculty as President of FGO, as well as address this board today. I thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Briggs. Anyone have any questions? I know, just for you all, for your, I don’t know. Know that Dr. Williams shares with us your meetings with her and keeps us attuned, and we are all certainly aware of and appreciate some of the significant things that are happening in the faculty right now. I know you’re being challenged and asked to do a lot, and we do appreciate that, and we know there are changes, especially with scheduling and with the campus-wide scheduling, and we hear, we hear that those things are happening. We understand that they’re happening, and we appreciate the willingness of the faculty and the deans to sit down and really resolve things on behalf of the students, so we can continue moving forward. So, thank you.
Thanks.
As the trustee representative for ISPS International, I always mess it up, so I’m not even going to try to say it, never mind, Institute for Strategic Policy and Solutions. It’s my pleasure to introduce Attorney Kimberly Jackson, our new executive director, who I am anxiously awaiting, seeing what she’s going to do with this institute.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Vice Chair. Good morning, Board of Trustees.
Good morning.
Thank you for your representation today. I want to start off with a small video to show you what we’ve been doing since we started in December 2nd. If you’d kindly play the video. Thank you. What you’re watching is video of our programming that you can continue playing of the, our programming with FCA, which is the Florida College, Florida Civic Advance Summit. They are a statewide organization that we’ve been partnering with, that we host. You’re also seeing the JWB, the Juvenile Wealth Board, which you’ll see next. You’ll see our Model UN Fellows, which I’ll talk about soon. They are new students who have been added to our program. And finally, you’ll see a presentation, which I did with some of our students, on unlocking higher education for students who have challenges getting into college because of their past criminal records. I’ll let you finish the video. Thank you. So what we wanted to do first, starting off, was branding. When we noticed, what do people think about ISPS or the Institute for Strategic Policy Solutions, we immediately realized that they didn’t really understand the idea that we are a think-tank for the college created by Congressman Bill Young with the idea of social, political, and economic alignment for nonpartisan conversations. This was our former brand, our website by our phenomenal team led by Rita, and Harrison has been doing an outstanding job of refreshing us and reintroducing us into the community. This is the new brand that they created for us. We hope you’re happy with it. It focuses on enhancing, educating, and engaging the community, which is what is the message we want to send across the community. We want our congressmen, our leaders nationally and at the state level and local level to know to come back to ISPS, to engage in the community. We had our strategic plan at our board meeting with our Board of Directors. It was wonderful to meet all of, with all of them and engage and hear their thoughts on how we can move forward as a team. We reiterated cultivating partnerships. We talked about balancing the programs, aligning with our missions, being nonpartisan, and committed to spreading the word across the community, along with our Florida College system, and really focusing on enhancing engagement, which has been what we’ve focused on for the past couple of weeks. Our first program, which you should have a copy of at your desk, is going to be on the, not particularly sea-level rise, but the whole idea of engagement across cleanup. It’s been created by one of our students, several of our teams. A student who was in our College of Business Sustainability Program created it. It is going to be a beach cleanup, and it’s going to kick off at the Bay Pine Center. It’s a hashtag movement to introduce us to the community abroad, to engage our online community, which is 33%, to engage our community that chooses to do online classes, which is 49%, to engage all of the colleges, and to let them know who we are. So we hope that you’ll join us on that. It’s going to be a month-long challenge, and it’s going to end on April 25th at the Good Vibes Festival, which was created by my former team member Frank Jerkovec, along with USF. And that’s going to be a month-long. We’re also going to have in interim a program, April 7th at the Gibbs Campus, with Chair Christian Moriarty and one of our adjuncts, Patrick Luce, and it’s going to talk about the ethical impact of sinking cities. We’re going to show a movie which discusses that issue. We’ve partnered with the St. Petersburg Chamber of Commerce and the Beaches to do a legislative wrap-up, and that will be on March 19th. Our hope is to bring student engagement to that program. It likely may not be at the Digitarium at this point. We’re working with them on doing that collectively and quickly. For our Autism Awareness Month, which is on April 2nd, it’s World Autism Awareness Day. We’re bringing the first attorney who was admitted to the bar, who was identified as autistic. Her name is Haley Moss, and she is going to be speaking. And we’re going to have Johns Hopkins as a partner, along with many of our legal communities, including Stets and University College of Law that we’re discussing with now. We hope for future programming to bring Pam Bondi in, along with Benjamin Crump, who has tentatively agreed to come in July, to have meaningful and robust conversations about some of the challenges going across our state. Our goal is to have balanced conversations, so whenever we have a conversation, it’ll be nonpartisan in thought process. We’re working with Creative Pinellas, which is committed to tourism across the area, but also committed to the arts. Barbara St. Clair and I are working on a program that would allow us to engage in how our students are active within the arts, and connecting them across the county in St. Petersburg, but further across the county. We are hoping and reaching for to celebrate, which is something important, our 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which allowed women to vote, and we are looking to have Stacy Abrams, who has a strong record on voting. Additional programs are programs that the Board of Directors and that we are gathering and collecting ideas on. Of course, we’re still in the program year, so we hope to make them robust and engaging. And we want to end with a gala. We want to revise something that was called the Distinguished Public Service Award. It was only given to Senator Dennis Jones in 2014. Our Board of Directors are submitting names, and we will let you know as soon as possible, with the hopes of having that program and that having a huge gala to bring everyone home at the end of the year. Our focus has been on trying to engage with the faculty. That’s why we’re using Christian Moriarty and Patrick Luce. Using our Model UN, our fellows have been exceptional. They’ve been working for about two months now and working hard, engaging the entire student body, and having SGA liaisons. I’m proud to say that with that first program, Keep Florida Beautiful is paying for it, and some of our SGAs, the Allstate campus agreed to pay for the breakfast, and collectively, they agreed to support it for the entire 30 days. And we want to, in the future, have a program similar to University of Florida, Future of Florida, which is a regional program created by students, for students, to solve problems. So that’s where we are right now. It’s been, now that I’m off the program, quite an eventful two months of meeting and gathering thoughts and asking students what their thought processes are, and asking our politicians and our leaders and our board for input as we rebrand and refresh. So we’re excited about that. And I think that the board, we have the blessing to move forward on how we change, and their assistance in helping how we move forward in the community. And I’ll take any questions at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Trustees?
I think this is outstanding, and this is the appropriate next step for ISPS. I love the new brand. I think it works well, and we’re excited that you’re here. Thank you. But I, I hope that we can stick with, I really liked what you talked about, having this be a balanced, nonpartisan group, because I think that’s where we’ll get the most value, especially as a college campus, to make sure we have competing ideas, debating those ideas, and allowing people to choose for themselves where they most associate. But this is a fantastic direction. Thank you, Bridget, for your help the last few months with ISPS, and I’m excited. I can’t wait to attend some of this stuff.
Thank you. We are strongly committed to nonpartisan. It’s a part of our mission. And we did have our session at Collaborative Labs, so the real-time record is available for anyone’s view, and it can give you a better idea, because we would like and appreciate any support with partners and sponsorships and community ideas.
Great.
Thank you.
She has a very verbose board, so I promise you, it will remain nonpartisan. We are not quiet.
They held me accountable.
Thank you so much, Assistant. Right, moving on to our Strategy and Policy section of our board meeting. Dr. Crawford?
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, Ms. Grid. I’m here today to share our first monthly dashboard of the spring semester. You have in front of you both a placemat, which the metrics are going to be off-ordered, because we’ve created, of course, a new platform for this to be online, that we’ll be able to show it all at once. But you should also have something that you can write on, I think that was printed earlier today, so just kind of follow with me. I’m going to start with our recruitment, and we’re going to start with our Workforce Institute, who are our non-credit side of the House. And you’ll see that at the end of January, they’re still showing an upward trend of year-over-year, and they do have a goal they’re trying to hit for the end of the year of about 6,032. So we’ll see how that plays out by the end of our June meeting. In regards to our credit side of the House, you’ve been looking at these two metrics of new students enrolled and our applications received for the last six months, and they’ve been in the red. But I want to share with you some positive insight on what’s going on behind these numbers. So at the beginning of our January meeting, you saw Dr. Renard shared where we were with our enrollment, and we saw negative enrollment for the spring and numbers that we haven’t seen probably for several semesters. The good news is, is that our 12-week courses are up 7% year-over-year, which is basically making our trend right now, looking at the end of the year, only down 1%. That’s huge. We still have eight-week two courses to fill. Our provosts and our deans are hard at work in getting students enrolled in these alternate course timeframes. Our Dr. Griffith had a 12-in-12 promotion, trying to get students to enroll in 12 credits for the 12-week courses. We’re working on a new scheduling procedure for fall. I know Dr. Williams has been talking about this for probably the last year. We finally have an idea on the ground that I think all of the provosts and deans are completely on board on, looking at a way to do a student-facing schedule that will be bringing more information to you on in the future. And you’ve also been hearing about new programs. Our cybersecurity being the first to be accepted by the State of Florida. We have three more in the hopper. We’re looking at new AS degree programs and certificate programs, which you will be hearing about soon. So, moving on to retention. In regards to retention, this is only looking through January, so about three weeks’ worth of classes. Our learning resource usage, so students going into tutoring, that’s still trending up. It has been throughout this year. Our withdrawal rate, last year we ended in our spring term about negative 1.7. We gave ourselves another good, try to push, we’ll try to get to a negative 2. Whether that happens or not, we don’t know. It’s only in Week 3, so it’s kind of hard to say where we, where that will end. And then in regards to our event attendance, you’ll see that we’re still trending way up. We do have a goal that we’re trying to hit of 28,000 for the year. Our events just started last week, so our, that’s our community, our career and academic community events. Those are week-long events for each of those career and academic communities. And I did want to share one that’s happening in March, just to remind you, at the Palladium. Our Ethics, our Ethics Group is bringing forward Todd May, who was a writer on The Good Place. It’s going to be an excellent opportunity for the community, as well as students, to attend an event that’s embedded within a classroom, to see if that has a greater impact than just attending an event that’s not embedded within a classroom assignment. And it was part of our AACNU grant that we worked on developing this piece. So we hope to see you there. It’s going to be an amazing conversation. If you scroll down to Employee Engagement, I’ve been talking to you a little bit about this every month. The next time you’re going to see this change will probably be in April, because the survey will come out again in March. We also have Margaret Bowman, who’ll be coming up here in a few minutes, to talk a little bit about all of the other parts and pieces that are going on behind the scenes in employee engagement, so you have a better understanding that this isn’t just like sitting here. There’s a whole lot of other work that’s going on behind the scenes. So if you scroll down to the Learning Experience, we do have our Spark usage, which is up. This is our ability to text message students through our learning management system. You know that faculty members who send these Sparks are showing higher gains in student success. Right next to that is our email tool usage, again, only through the learning management system. And this is down right now, but that’s not unusual. In the beginning of the term, faculty members are trying to determine what’s the best way to communicate with students, through the LMS, our learning management, through our Outlook with our live account, through their own Gmail account. How do they get in touch with them? So it’s not unusual to show that this, this is in the red at this time of the year. And then finally, professional development. You’ve been asking for a while, could you show us headcount? The numbers are much lower than you might be used to seeing. That’s because we’re looking at strictly unduplicated headcount of faculty members who are attending these events for the first time, keeping the target at 10% to kind of see where we end up at the end of the semester. And last but not least, our resource alignment. Our Titan Fund is up a huge amount, partly in due to a one-time planned gift to the Titan Fund that we received during this last time period of $50,000. So that was, we were hugely appreciative of that. Our grants, although they are writing like mad, this is the time of writing, they still show an uptick, a small uptick for the last month. And then when we look at our revenue, again, focusing on that non-state revenue, that’s part that we can actually have an impact on. When I came to you last time, we were at negative $640,000. You can see we are now only at negative 378, so that is tracking well. I’m here to answer any questions if you might have them.
Anyone? I know last time we had some questions about the revenue numbers.
I have, I have a question, Chair Cole. Obviously, the, the new students enrolled, you know, not a great number, but it sounds like that’s going to tighten up a little bit, which is a good thing. And I know we’re all working very hard on new programs, new classes, new ways to increase that, as we have been. But what I do like seeing is the decrease in the withdrawal rate, which should help offset some of that. So I know it’s early. Hopefully, we continue to see that number stay where it is. And I have to think that that’s directly related to, I mean, this jump in Spark usage, some of the other ways that faculty is reaching out to students, hopefully to keep them online and focused and moving in the right direction. So thank you to the faculty for helping with these things, putting the time and effort in to make sure that our withdrawal rate goes in the right direction. But thank you. I still like looking at this report and the information we get from it.
Absolutely. I think that you’re right. I think that the retention numbers that the faculty and the staff have been so focused on are really showing. That’s what’s making the difference right now. It’s not that we’re getting those new students. We’re getting returned students. We’re getting stop-out students, and we’re keeping the ones we have, and that’s a huge new direction for us to be moving in.
It’s a big deal.
It’s big. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bowman?
Okay, good morning, Chair Cole.
Okay, good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Chief of Staff, Grid.
Morning.
I am happy to be here to give you an update on the state of employee engagement at St. Petersburg College. And just as a reminder, our survey phase is in timeline. So as you know, we started this in October 2018 with the very first-ever survey of the entire college to gather their thoughts about engagement. And that was followed up with a series of focus groups, employee focus groups, to be able to really look at the data and further analyze it, verify and clarify that. From those focus groups, we identified five top priority areas that basically cut across needs across the entire college. And we are now in the engage, implement, and improvement phase. And that's what I am excited to tell you about, some of the things that are coming up as a result of the employee suggestions from them. So again, as a reminder, the survey results, this is just the dashboard giving you a high-level overview of what was revealed through the full survey, engagement survey. You can see we had a participation rate of 44%. And again, as a reminder, while that number may seem low, we invited the entire college family. So that includes adjunct faculty, that includes contract workers, OPS, student employees. So basically, anybody that collected a paycheck from St. Petersburg College was invited to participate. If we look at our full-time employees, we had over an 80% participation rate, which is benchmark, actually, for first-time administrations. So the two questions that are circled up there, our highest-scoring item, again, was one that Dr. Williams wanted to ask, which was basically looking at employees' ability and their willingness to grow and to change as the college grows and changes. And that was our highest-scoring item. And then our lowest-scoring item really had to do with employees' confidence in changes occurring as a result of this survey. So as we broke that down through our focus groups, we found that that really revolved around this central theme of trust. Okay? And as our score distribution showed, our greatest opportunity really resides at the college level. So it is not going down into any one college, any one department, or with any one level of employees. But it basically says that it's our processes, our systems that cut across the college that we really need to pay attention to. So the framework that we are using, number one, to measure engagement, but then also to identify improvement opportunities, is this magic framework, standing for meaning, autonomy, growth, impact, and connection. And you'll see at the top five themes how those fell out in each of those areas, with our two greatest needs occurring in the areas of autonomy and trust, and then growth, which covers employees feeling recognized, professional development opportunities, and the like. So once we had those top themes identified by employees, then the next step was to come up with an institutional response plan. And so from that, we've got four items that we're working on and have already made some great strides with that I'm going to share with you right now. So this is how we are engaging the college community, collaborating across the college, and then implementing these improvement actions. The first thing that we did, as you know, is we expanded the Employee Experience and Engagement Committee. So we initially had a committee that was put together to really decide how are we going to approach this whole effort. And they were very instrumental in selecting the vendor that we used to lead us through the survey initiative. We've now expanded that committee to now look more closely at how do we implement these activities or these exercises that will really help connect employees to the organization. And up there, you will see some of the things that have occurred to date and some of the plans that are underway. The second thing that we've done is we are linking employee engagement to Discovery Day. So as you know, that's our annual, once all-employee professional development day. And so we're being much more intentional about the focus around those professional development opportunities. This year, because trust and autonomy were such big indicators in the survey, we are really going to focus on that at Discovery Day. So we are looking at possibly having the actual author of Leading at the Speed of Trust come in. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute as we engage the community. But we are looking at having him come in for a day, spend that with our employees, open that up to our community, and possibly even to our students. So that is a very exciting opportunity. This truly does have the capacity to change the culture and really impact how employees feel about trusting us. The third response is capitalizing on our supervisors as an engagement strength. So again, if we look back at our initial results, what we saw is that our supervisors really are the key to helping our employees feel connected to the institution. So we are starting with professional development with our supervisors, which will kick off in March with, and it is a required event. But the idea behind that is that we equip them with the knowledge and the capabilities to really know how to, again, purposefully engage their employees. And then they take this content and start spreading that with their employees. So it does begin with the leadership. We're defining supervisors as anyone who has at least one direct report. Okay? So that is a pretty wide net that we're casting, but it does demonstrate Dr. Williams and, of course, your commitment to the leadership of the institution. We are also going to be doing a 360 feedback for all senior leaders. That process has already started and will finish in May with about 35 folks at the institution that are taking part in this. And that will be another data point that, again, we are using decision-wise for that. So it aligns very nicely with our employee engagement survey results. So it's giving us a more broad picture of what this looks like. Okay? And then finally, talking about going back to how we build a high-performing, high-trust culture. So we want to, again, after this supervisory event in March and April, we will then begin involving the rest of the college in discussions around trust, specifically around behaviors that help to extend, build, and rebuild trust. And one of the things that we did at Discovery Day this last year was we asked employees through a series of 10 different events, I believe it was, 10 different sessions. Number one, what is one thing your supervisor can do to basically display trust and extend trust to you? But secondly, and more importantly, how can you extend and display trust? So we took that feedback and actually built that into this professional development that, again, all supervisors will be going through. So there's a very nice alignment that actually has been quite easy because it all makes sense. It has just provided us, this whole initiative has provided us with the means to be able to formally capture the feedback from our employees and put it into a framework so that we can begin making tangible changes. Our next steps, as you will see, again, we're in that, still in that collaborate, improve, and implement. And then as Dr. Crawford mentioned, we will send out our first PULSE survey, which is just asking questions around professional development in March and hope to be able to report back to you on that in April. And we plan to do a full assessment again in probably July of 2021. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions? Just as a reminder to the trustees, if you recall, in December at our strategic planning, we split up and went with the different groups. And I was with the employee engagement group, so I look forward to being a part of this process. But we'll be in March, Dr. Crawford, so you'll be receiving some dates of forthcoming meetings for your subgroup that's part of the strategic planning session and the ongoing improvement. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your leadership with that, too.
Next up is our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have no old business. Under new business, we have a number of administrative matters, curriculum changes, grants and restricted funds, contracts, and other actions, selection of bank services, use of college facilities by direct service. Hopefully, you all reviewed these items in your packet. Do you have any questions with respect to any of these items? If not, I'll entertain a motion in toto.
Second.
All in conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Very good. Informational reports. Section 8 of your packet is the informational reports. I just want to thank our DSO directors for these reports. It's extremely helpful, I know to me and I'm sure to the other trustees, to be able to keep track of what's going on with the entirety of the college. We obviously, you know, the day-to-day student success and recruitment is something that we talk about probably so much, it may suck the air out of all the other good things that the college is doing. So these reports are extremely helpful. And I love the Artist in Residence Program at the Palladium, if you all read about that, which is very exciting. So I think that's a wonderful opportunity to partner, especially in St. Pete, with all of the arts there. Also, in our informational reports is the operating budget. And I was hoping, Ms. Hunt, if you could speak just a little bit to the reduction in the difference between the $600,000 projected difference in tuition versus now projected 300, and if that's solely a recruitment and enrollment issue or on that line item, how we're seeing that gap close and what we can be doing to, by June, continue to close it.
Sure. So last month, when you saw the presentation, the $600,000, it did not include some of the short sessions that we have of some of the eight weeks. So it was as of December 31 of where we projected. So the difference that you see for this month is that the enrollment for the short-term classes, and we also have another eight-week course that we'll be enrolling. So that's why you see the closing gap. So we are hoping that we'll see that narrow down to zero.
Wonderful. And I know you're the reporter of the numbers, but compliments to the team on the non-tuition revenue, seeing that as above-budgeted is really helping. And that was, I know our goal two years ago was to say, let's get on that non-tuition revenue.
Yes. And actually, to note, to the non-credit, right now, we're looking at a projection of about $120,000 over the budgeted amount.
Wonderful.
So that's also affecting the numbers.
That does. Wonderful for everybody. Thank you so much. Any other questions, Ms. Hunt, while she's here? Okay. President's report?
I'm going to turn it on. Okay, so in terms of the legislative update, we shared a bit about the DC trip. And now that you're here, Mr. Gibbons, Dr. Williams did want to thank you for your support in setting up the meeting with Senator Rubio. That was a significant achievement for us, where we were able to use those visits to give you a little bit more detail regarding funding and policy. So we did talk a lot about student support, funding, support for veteran services, as well as policy changes in terms of short-term Pell and advocating that we are able to use Pell grants for short-term training. And so the consensus with our legislators seemed that they were in support of that. And the great, in addition to that, they were actually very knowledgeable about that. So I think that was really helpful for us in terms of their advocacy. Regarding state funding, the budget came out last week, I think, and the proposed budgets for the House and Senate show a Florida college system increase in funding. The House and Senate included a $14 million appropriation or line item for industry certifications. Both budget proposals included funding for performance incentives, but the amounts vary between both sides. The House has included almost $23 million in a tiered funding model for the Florida college system, while the Senate has a $30 million line item allocated for the tiered funding model on their side. So $23 million on the House and $30 million set aside for the Senate. We aren't sure about the specific allocation that SPC will receive out of this because the funding model specifics are fluctuating. So we're still waiting to hear from the state how that might pan out. And of course, this is their initial budget. So the nursing simulation budget request, legislative budget request for expanding funding for nursing simulation has a placeholder in the budget, which is great news. What is excluded from the initial proposals is Florida college system capital outlay maintenance funding, as well as our workforce incubator funding for Tarpen. So we are continuing to work on that. This is very early in the process, and there's still quite a bit of negotiating to do between the House and Senate. We'll continue to lobby for priorities throughout the remainder of session. I think we have about two weeks left. One last thing to keep in mind is a bill that will significantly impact our funding moving forward related to state-administered retirement systems, which will require the Florida college system to contribute an additional estimated $18.6 million yearly as the employer contribution for the FRS. So we have estimated that our impact at SPC will be around $1.1 million each year that we'll have to account for. So Tallahassee this week, Commissioner Corcoran is hosting a luncheon tomorrow for all FCS presidents, and they'll be discussing strategy moving forward. And several board members will be attending the governor's reception for presidents and BOT members at the governor's mansion. So that's a great opportunity to also support our cause. Thank you for those of you who will be traveling to Tallahassee this week. I know it's not easy, not easy, especially coming off a trip last week. So we really appreciate your support to the college and representing us there. Thank you. That's the report for the legislative update. Other couple items, the Moving the Needle Conference will be held April 1st and 2nd. This year, the Moving the Needle is combining with the Narrowing the Gulf Conference. They're joining forces, merging into a conference called Moving the Needle: Supporting Students by Narrowing the Achievement Gap. We hope you will join us there, again, April 1st and 2nd. And that you mentioned that the board members will be joining the Executive Leadership Council in the strategic planning beginning next month. So that's the final report item for Dr. Williams.
Thank you for ably sitting in for Dr. Williams this morning. If there's no other business, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we can adjourn this meeting, but don't forget, we are reconvening at St. Petersburg Collegiate High School. Is there any other business? Okay, we will adjourn and then reconvene at St. Petersburg Collegiate High School.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Mrs. Grid. Thank you so much for the opportunity to bring three items to you this morning. The first is the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Awards Policy. The second is the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's Best and Brightest Award Plan for the 2019-20 school year. And the last item is the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's 2020-21 Academic Calendar. The Florida Legislature recognizes the critical role that teachers play in helping our students achieve at high levels and realize that the most effective school principals create a safe and nurturing learning environment for faculty and staff. In an effort to recruit teachers to meet the needs of the state and to recognize and retain highly qualified teachers and principals, they established the Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Awards Program. Each year, the Florida Department of Education identifies eligible schools for the Florida Best and Brightest Awards Program and notifies the district of the allocation for each of the schools. These awards are funded through K-12, Florida Educational Finance Program, so the awards have no impact on the college budget. And these awards are very common in K-12, where students, teachers, and principals are achieving at high levels. In the past, St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, has been eligible and has received these awards. However, governing board approval was not required, and the amount of each award was dictated by the Department of Education. dictated by the Department of Education. This year, the Department of Education is requiring charter schools to establish a Best and Brightest policy and a plan, and to obtain governing board approval of both the policy and the plan, which is why I'm bringing this forward for your review and approval this morning. Each of you did receive a copy of the policy upon your approval. If you do so today, then each year that the collegiate high schools are awarded these funds, we would bring forth a plan for your review and approval in the future. Are there any questions regarding the policy? Great. Okay. Next, I'm bringing forth for your review, please, the Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Award Plan. As you look at the plan, you may have noticed that the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus allocation is significantly higher than the one for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas. And that is because the award is based on the current student enrollment, and enrollment is higher at St. Petersburg Gibbs. On the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, you will notice that we had teachers who were eligible for the recruitment awards, the retention awards, and the recognition awards. The principal award, we were not eligible, because I am in a new role, and Dr. Call and Ms. Giles have not been at the collegiate high schools long enough to be eligible for those awards. At the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas-Tarpon Springs campus, you will see that faculty are eligible for the recruitment awards, and so four faculty members there would be eligible. Do you have any questions regarding the plan?
No, but I'll entertain a motion to approve both the policy and the plan to implement the policy this year.
So move.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then the last item is the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's 2020-21 Academic Calendar. This calendar is for our students in Grade 10. They are required to attend school 180 days, and the district requires that in this calendar, we identify the hurricane makeup days. It is a calendar that has been created aligned to both St. Petersburg College calendar and the Pinellas County Schools calendar. Our juniors and seniors, of course, follow the college calendar. Are there any questions regarding the proposed calendar for your review?
Is there a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. There being any other business before the Board? With that, we will adjourn. Thank you all so much.